Good evening and welcome to the September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, meeting of the Yorktown Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is John Meisterich. I chair the board. With me tonight, Anthony Altamare, Bill Gregory, I'm told Tony Tripodi will be here, Bob Fahey, our recording secretary, Glenda Daly, our attorney, Katie Krahulik, our assistant, Mizreen Corey, and the building inspector, Steve Freyetta, in the front row.
We have a full.
Yes. So our first order of business, guys, is to approve the minutes from the July meeting. I sent out a copy a little late, but hopefully you all got a time, chance to review it. I will make a motion to approve the July minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the first thing I'm really gonna do is to set up next month's meeting, which is, if you're here under new business, we go through some administrative information here for you. The meeting date is October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, here in the boardroom. If we call for a site visit for your property or your variance or your permit, that will be done on October eighteenth. It's a Saturday morning. The board gets together and tries to come together, although I personally am not gonna be there that weekend because I'm going away, but the rest of the board hopefully will make it on Saturday morning, and we go from south to north in town. And generally, if it's an external variance, if you can mark things off, you don't necessarily have to be there. I believe one of the applications is a new accessory apartment. We may need access to the property or the inside. In that case, we may discuss it if the applicant's here. Site visits, then we have mailings. If you are granted a hearing, you will have to send mailings to your neighbors. Those mailings must be postmarked between September twenty-ninth and October eighth. If they are not postmarked between those dates, we cannot legally open your hearing. In addition to just the dates, you have to send a notification to your neighbors of what it is you're going to be doing. That notification has to be sent with a certificate of mailing from the post office. The certificate of mailing is not the same as certified mail. It's much cheaper. It's just a white card that they stamp and you bring to Mizreen in the building department to verify that it meets these dates. You also, so you include a copy of that, of what was sent to the neighbors, and a sign on your property. I don't know if we have signs here tonight, but you could always get one from the building department, and a picture of your sign, and an affidavit stating when the sign was displayed. Okay. So moving on to new business on the agenda. Nunez?
Yes.
Thirty-two forty Hollywood Street. You can come to the podium. So this is an application for a renewal of a special use permit for an accessory apartment. So basically, what we normally do is just handle this administratively since it's a renewal. Has anything changed since?
No.
So we'll just, I'll, I'll mark this down as administrative. I'll refer to the building department. They'll write, they'll come out, and they'll write us a memo. We don't have to come, and we'll have a public hearing on October eighteenth next month. So that's all, all for tonight for you. Okay? Second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Markelage, twenty-seven fifty-two Windmill Drive. This is an application to legalize a front porch that requires a variance for a front yard setback of twenty-four point three feet, where forty is required as per section three-hundred-twenty-one of the town zoning code. So you can state your name for the record, and just, nothing major here. We're gonna pretty much set it down for a hearing next month, but...
Hi, I'm John Turnquist, JT Two Architects. We're here to legalize the existing awning that was built over the, well, it's existing, but over an existing patio at the front of the house. The awning goes to the perimeter of the patio.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is basically make a motion to refer this to the building department, set it down for a site visit on the eighteenth, so we'll be able to see it, if it's existing. There's not much you really have to do as far as even being there.
Is this, did you, did you build it, or this was on the building when?
This is the owner. He rebuilt it.
Rebuilt it?
He rebuilt it, and it was extended a little bit more. It had an existing non-conforming front yard setback. So he built it to the edge of the patio, which is elevated slightly off the ground, two foot six.
Did the prior, what, did, what he had there prior, was that, was that, did that require a variance?
No.
Or that was in, that was, everything was in keeping?
Uh, the, the entire front yard was non-conforming before.
Okay.
But he extended it slightly. It's a little bit bigger, but it goes to the exa, uh, the edge of the patio that's there.
Okay, we'll take a look.
So since it's in the front, we'll just more or less pull up to the front and take a quick look. So if you're there, great, that would be fine. If you're not, it's probably gonna be fine also. So site visit on the eighteenth, public hearing on October twenty-third. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you next month. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bertino, thirty-two twenty-six Mohegan Avenue. This is an application to construct an addition in the rear of an existing home that requires a variance for a rear yard setback of twenty-five feet, where thirty feet is required. A previous variance was granted on the property, see number one oh two dash ninety-one.
I'm Mary Scott, the architect for the Bertinos.
Okay, so basically, standard variance application for an addition.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a one-story piece there now. We just wanna square it off.
What was the pre, do you know what the previous variance was?
Um, so the previous owners in nineteen ninety-one, the whole lot and all the setbacks were non-conforming, and they wanted to legalize it.
Okay. Okay, so again, I'll refer this to the, I'll make a motion to refer this to the building department, set this down for a site visit on October eighteenth, and a public hearing on October twenty-third. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Canoe, seventeen oh nine Summit Street. Okay, so this might need some discussion for us. It's an application for a special use permit for legalization of an accessory apartment that requires a special use permit.
Ah.
So I guess I would consider this a new accessory if you've never had anything?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, this is the one I was referring to. I'll refer to the building department for an inspection. You know, I'll also set it down for a site visit from our board, which would most likely require access to the accessory apartment in some way, and a public hearing on October twenty-third. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, this canoe is not here tonight, so would we notify them in writing that we're gonna conduct a site visit? Okay.
Carfagnio, fifteen seventy-nine Summit Street. This is an application for a special use permit for an accessory apartment for a change of owner that requires a special use permit. So we handle that like a renewal. So I'll make a motion to refer this to building, handle it administratively, meaning no site visit, and a public hearing on this, on October twenty-third. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sanchez, twenty-nine eighty Curry Street. This is an application to construct a two-story addition that requires a variance for front yard west setback on a corner lot of twenty-nine feet, where forty feet is required, and a rear yard setback of thirty-five feet, where forty feet is required, per the town zoning code. A previous variance was granted for this property, see number thirty-seven twelve and thirty-five zero one. Anyone here on this application? Okay, that, that's okay. I think we're fine to basically, um, set this, I'll make a motion to refer this to building, set it down for a site visit on the eighteenth of October, and a public hearing on October twenty-third. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nassif, eight oh nine Lock Lane. This is an application to construct a detached garage that requires a variance for side yard setback of five feet, where thirty feet is required, per the town zoning code. Anyone here on Nassif, eight oh nine Lock Lane? Okay. Again, we'll just make a motion to refer this to the building department, set it down for a site visit on October eighteenth, and a public hearing on October twenty-third. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're now going to move on to the adjourned agenda. Reyes, is anyone here on that? It's a renewal of its accessory. So since that's a renewal, we'll just try to remember to go back on the end, at the end of the meeting for that one. Bojori Alley?
Yes.
Oh. Okay, this is an application for a new children's daycare center that requires a special use permit per three hundred dash fifty-three of the town zoning code. Can you just state your name for the record?
Vincent Bojori Alley.
And Christina Bojori Alley.
Okay, so last I remember, a while back, you were here, and we referred this to the planning board, because daycare centers are rather complicated and require many site plan approval steps, I would say.
We've been to, yep.
And a little bit beyond the scope of what we can do as a board. So based on you being here, and what was represented to us here, that you have, I guess, a resolution or approval from the planning board?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so that's...
And all the drawings.
Good news, yeah.
Site plans, everything.
I'm just gonna see if there's any, like, new memos that we didn't read the last time. I, I read the memos that were here, you know, when we first opened the hearing. They were all December, December.
Anyone's other emails from the DOT and stuff like that in the end?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily gonna read, um, a bunch of, you know. Anyway, let me, uh... So basically, I guess what I would say is, first of all, we have, I assume we have plans here that are now the ones that are approved.
Approved, yes.
So I, I'm not gonna read the planning board, uh, resolution. That's already a public record, but there's like an eight-page site plan.
Yep.
An eight-page plan, basically.
Right.
So I, I don't know if the board has questions for the applicants about that plan. I believe it covered all the bases as far as, you know, the traffic studies, the parking, the stormwater mitigations, the...
Wetlands.
Everything was addressed, yeah.
Everything, so I, you know, the...
What did it have to say about the traffic, the left-hand turns?
So, all right, you have a question on that? It's in the memos.
It's in the memo. What did they have to say about the traffic with the left-hand turns? I know that was quite controversial. I'm curious as to what the, what the planning board had to say about that.
They turn, well, so the highway department, the state turned it over to local, and they've decided to do no left turn in, no left turn out.
And how are they gonna enforce that?
Um, they want us to put signs up, I believe, on the property.
But you know what? There's also an open document that we're gonna sign to say either way, we're fine with it. If it goes another direction, you know, if right turn in, right, if it goes switched over again, we're not, you know, opposed to either, either or. So there, there was a statement in that letter there.
Out of curiosity.
Yes.
How many people are gonna do drop-offs in the morning? And what's, what's the expected occupancy of this, of the school?
So there's, the highest number of enrollment is sixty children total.
Sixty.
But I did submit, I don't know if you guys got a copy of, like, the drop-off. It's very scattered. It's not like I have twenty families dropping off at any given time. I open at six-thirty a.m., and that early, there's only, like, two children in. So it's scattered from six-thirty in the morning to even nine-thirty in the morning. They'd get dropped off at any time in between.
And so you, okay, and so now, I'm sure, I, I didn't, I haven't read this information, so if I ask redundant questions, I apologize.
No, that's fine.
So when they're gonna make these turns, and you've got people say they, they back up coming into your parking lot, and there's traffic out on two oh two, I mean, how do we, how are, how are they addressing that?
So there was, there was a whole highway study done.
Right.
Um, that the town had...
We have nineteen, we have nineteen parking spaces now.
Okay.
And we, if you look at the site plan, it just shows where they can come in, drop off, and leave. So they drop their kid off, they park, because there's nineteen spots.
Well, no, they have to park and walk their children into the building.
Yes, we're not gonna have eighteen people come in simultaneously. Maybe it'd be five or six at the same time, something like that.
Right.
So it looks like that would, you know, be able to handle the capacity.
And during, um, when they have the open, where people come, the public hearings, a lot of the parents submitted letters stating that when they're there to drop off their children, they very rarely encounter one or two other families when they're there.
And it's quick. It's not like, you know, a five-minute conversation. It's...
People are in a rush to get to work.
I'm sure you're, I'm sure you're aware of how crazy that traffic is on two oh two and one thirty-two, especially eight, seven-thirty, eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning. It's insane.
You give them a note, right, when they drop off your kid, right?
So I did, I'm sorry?
You're saying it's, it's staggered.
It is staggered. I don't, I never even have, no, I don't even have five families at one time dropping off. I never have that. I did submit that prior to, but I was, I was trying to think of something else that I, I know.
So she drops off a note, like, the teachers have a note with a summary of, of the child's needs and what happened, and they give it to the parent. So it's not like a big conversation, oh, Joe fell down today, he lost his toy.
No, no.
So she has everything written out, they take it, and they go back, and then they call her later.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's, it's very quick. It's very brief.
So basically, as it stands, it's right turn into your parking lot.
Right now, it's right and right. We agree to that, yeah, if that's what they wanted.
And if it goes the other way, we're okay with it.
If they decide to change.
Out of curiosity, if I'm coming from town, right, I'm, I'm, I'm coming from town, I'm heading over that way, and I can't make that left-hand turn, what, what's the direction? What, what street? Are you going through Flag, or you go through Springhurst? How do you, how do you get to?
Is that light, where's that light on one thirty-two?
The traffic, I mean...
Yeah, Springhurst, right by the high school? Is that the...
We're further down, huh?
Yeah, it's a little bit further.
I know where you are.
Yeah.
But if I can't make a left-hand turn, and I gotta make a right-hand turn?
Well, that's why...
How do you make that right, how do you, what street do you go around to get it to the back?
So that's why, at the public hearing, the people who live in that neighborhood had the same questions, and they addressed it with the planning department.
What did they say?
And so that's why, they, they were sure that that, that's what was gonna happen.
They were okay with that?
So they weren't sure they wanted the left-hand turn in, and, you know, no left turn in, no left turn out.
Yeah.
And then it got, whatever the building, I mean, the planning department decides is what we follow, but they did have people speaking about that, and I think they went with the no left turn in, no left turn out.
Yeah, I figured that was...
They left it open.
I figured that's what was gonna happen with the no left-hand turn, but I just was curious as to how they resolved. You can't make a left-hand turn, so now, how do you, so now what do you do? When, how do you get around to make that right-hand turn? Where do you go?
I think it's to each, each individual how they, I mean, I don't know how to answer that, to be honest with you, but I will say this...
Your traffic study didn't anticipate that?
They must have. I mean, the traffic study was turned in.
Oh, we had an engineer from you guys, didn't we?
Yeah, the town referred us to the engineering company that did it. The highway study did it.
It was a, it was something, it was a traffic group that was hired by the town, but...
Yes.
Correct. We paid it, but they paid for it, yes.
Yes.
Was hired by the town?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
What I was gonna say, I'm sorry, was that ninety percent of my families are traveling two oh two regardless. We just cut their travel time on two oh two by half, because I'm located on two oh two in the Parkside Corner Shopping Center right now. So they were traveling up two oh two, they're just cutting their travel time on two oh two.
So it's not a new business, it's an existing business?
No, it's an existing business.
You're moving.
You're just moving down about a mile and a half.
Moving closer, where hopefully I can afford the rent.
Moving uptown.
Uptown, yeah, something like that, something like that.
So I, I mean, I'm reading in the resolution, it basically says that the DOT may prohibit left turns.
That's right.
Right.
And I guess they've had trouble getting the DOT to formally respond.
Right, they, they actually told it was up to you guys.
Yeah, the DOT surrendered that to local authority.
I do see an email that said they don't seem to care, so I, I guess that's...
And either do we, it's not that we don't care.
I think it's up to the planning department at this point, to make the ultimate decision.
Yeah, I shouldn't use those terminologies. They would support whatever the planning department.
Right, exactly.
Right, so would we, so would we, yeah.
Exactly.
So, and again, this resolution takes into consideration of reports from the, from the conservation board, an environmental consultant, the fire inspector, the planning department itself, the town engineer, the traffic consultant, the Westchester County Planning Board, the New York City DEP, the New York State DEC, and the New York State Department of Transportation. So, you know, many bases were covered through the various agencies and boards in coming up with and agreeing to this, this plan. So I, I for one, don't feel the need to, like, kinda rehash, you know, all of it unless we have, like, questions about it, for sure. We definitely should answer them.
Well, there's stuff that basically we have to address. I think Steve is gonna give us...
Well, there is one thing that we have to address, that, well, go ahead, come on, come, yes.
No, you can't.
For the record, Steve Freyetta, building inspector, assistant building inspector. I think this still has to be reviewed. I think there are issues. There might be some variances that are gonna be required. This was, came to you to see if it was the feasibility of getting the special permit.
Right.
And it kinda looks positive at this point, so I think we have to look at this so that we can, I can determine what variances might be required for the building.
Yeah, I think that that is definitely needed, because I remember that you sent a memo back early on in the process, when I guess this was a non-firm plan.
And this, I just got ordered this, like, two days ago, and I, I didn't have the time to, to review the process with it, so I, I need some time to take a peek at this.
So I, I even mentioned that back when, that, you know, I wasn't going to address the variances back in December timeframe, because the plan might change.
Correct.
You know, so much that it wasn't really worth it. So now I think you gotta review the, the new plan and say, what are the variances required?
Correct. Then we'll submit it to you.
You know, if they're, assuming they've changed. But as far as the, you know, the traffic patterns or any of the things in the plan, do we have questions? I definitely would get them out, aired out right now. Um, how many, like, any of these questions that we have?
One of the things that's obvious is that, you know, we don't have, we haven't had the ability to look at it.
To really look at it, right.
I mean, this thing was just passed on Monday.
Okay.
By the planning board, and quite frankly, I don't think that any of us have seen the, the approved plans or the resolution.
I have everything, right? I'm sorry.
We, we may have it now, but we just got it.
Yeah, we...
That's right, that's right.
So, so one of the things that obviously I'm inclined to do is not only do we have to take a look at the variances that are required, because that's something we kinda knew about early on.
Right.
But also take a look at the, the, the plan that was approved by resolution by the planning board, to see if they've covered all of the things that we as a board need to look at.
Okay.
So with that in mind, I think that, from my perspective, we're gonna have to unfortunately adjourn this until we get an opportunity, both for us, but also for the building department, to take a look and, and make sure that we have a clean application going forward.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I definitely agree with what you're saying, Bill, and I just wanna make sure there's nothing, like, right now, we already know that we would wanna get further information on, so, you know...
Again, again, until we take a look at the documents, there's, there's no way to answer that question.
Absolutely. So, um, any comments that you have?
Well, I mean, she has a, her lease is up.
I did, oh, I extended it already once.
I believe it's in May or April, so...
We're just trying to see when we can...
I understand, I, I sympathize and under, yeah. Sympathize and understand, of course.
Right.
That's the problem, yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, we could, I, I, it is a complicated plan, and I do think the board needs to just...
Review it.
I understand.
So would we be put on the next meeting?
Oh, that's fair.
Definitely.
We do the, we do, you know, we'll have the variance solidified at that point, unless something in the review is strange, and in fact, if it is, we can...
Reach out prior to?
Reach out, you know.
And that's, that's something that I think we all wanna do, is basically, if we look at it, and even prior to the meeting, if there were some questions that we collectively might have.
We can answer prior to.
That we can, we can...
Not a problem.
Okay.
And see if we can resolve them before the meeting itself.
I don't wanna promise anything that I can't deliver, but the goal would be, it's, it's all buttoned up.
Everything should be, okay.
We wanna dot the i's and cross the t's, you know, make sure that everything is done right. It's, it's fair to the town, it's fair to you, and we wanna have it right.
I mean, the variances would be a major issue if we couldn't get those right, honestly, for you, because if we say, approved a special permit, but then all of a sudden the variances aren't approved, then you're kinda starting over, and you could have a whole situation on there.
We wanna do that.
If you wanna get it all done.
Now, what, what you may wanna consider doing is, again, I, I, I believe you do have a copy of this section.
I can't see that from here.
Uh, let me give it this to you. This is the section that controls what we do.
Okay.
In terms of our approval for special permit, so you may wanna go, go over that and make sure that we have all the documentation that's included in that document that you, that we have, okay?
Have there, included in all of them.
My cursory review, of course, like Bill's saying, we didn't have, like, a huge amount of time. It definitely looks like, and that's why I read that part of the planning memo, uh, the planning resolution, that at least they had inputs from all the kinda legal entities that we would have to get referrals from.
That's not a big deal.
Fire inspector and so forth, so, but there is, like, insurance and certain things that are in that, and, you know, you can definitely work through Mizreen, through us, and just, you know, like I said, just...
Should we get, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
So we have, we, we would get an insurance certificate for that address that it's not even existing yet? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, that's the way the law's written, but if that's unattainable, I think that we could do a subject to, on subject to.
Yeah, we can make that subject to.
I'm sorry?
We can make that subject to.
Certain things like that, if it's...
Yeah, that's not a problem. I just wanna know where, if there's no...
We understand, I understand.
It's not even a, a built, it's not even built yet, so you can't have the insurance. We just say, subject to the insurance.
Right, right, okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Alright, well, thank you very much. Thank you all.
Just wanna ask if anyone from the public has any comments on this application? No, okay. We'll see you in October.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, uh, this hearing, pojor reali, until the October meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Glenda.
Oh, yeah, she's good, she could share.
Uh, Pan Bar Realty?
Um, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'll have to recuse myself on this application.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, so this is a, uh, adjourned from prior months. An application to combine two lots to create one single lot. That will require variance for total amount of lot area of ten thousand square feet, where twenty thousand square feet is required. The address is thirty-three oh one and thirty-three oh seven Lookout Street. And it abuts Hollywood. If it were to be, uh, divided, these slots would actually be, end up being on Hollywood. So, um, just, I guess state your name for the record and.
Louis Panny.
Okay.
I'm the developer.
So, my last recollection is, um.
Stormwater was the issue.
Stormwater and a, and a, at least a rendering or a building, a building plan.
We have it here.
So, that has been provided in some way. I'm gonna just see if we have any memos here that I hadn't, hadn't read. You know, as you recall, we had some memos and comments in opposition. Thank you. But all of this is dated. I'm just trying to make sure nothing's new here as far as these memos. I think we don't have any new memos. Okay, so we're really at the point where, um. Some of the concern areas from the public were stormwater runoff and at least from the public and or the board, character of the neighborhood. So the things that we had asked you for were to kind of address those concerns. So. Alright, you laid some papers here and I think this looks.
That's what's up there. But just figured it'd be easier for you guys to see it. Move it around.
So, basically, I'm sorry, so.
Any elevation views or?
Ms. Reen, like, the elevation itself is like kind of a front view of the house.
That's fine.
Uh.
Yep.
Kinda like a, it's kinda more of a, I would say, a picture. That looks like part of the stormwater stuff.
Yep.
Probably in the front.
Retaining walls for the driveway area.
Could you stand here and hold it?
You wanna hold that?
I just wanna see what the house is gonna look like first before we.
Well, the house is on the top. Yep.
Alright, we're getting closer.
Very similar to the houses in the area.
Alright, so, there is a plan now up front that is kind of a visual rendering of, of the front. And I think one of the concerns that the board had, really on this one is. You know, how high the house is relative to the other houses, how large the house is relative to.
It's not gonna be higher than either house on either side of it. It's one and a half story ranch style house. And the house next to it is two stories, actually.
So, right now, what I'm looking at.
At some point, didn't somebody say thirty-seven feet from grade or something?
No.
Thirty-seven's allowed.
Thirty. Yeah, yeah, oh, oh.
Thirty-five, thirty-five's allowed, and that's really where I was getting concerned is thirty-five feet. But the grade is measured, the average from front to back, and this house has an uphill, so really like, average from thirty, thirty-five from the middle of that property is.
It's not thirty-five, though. It wouldn't be thirty-five to the middle, it'd be more like.
Have a grading plan that showed it.
This grading plan, one of the problems that I see and I.
Well, this is, you can't go by the p- plan, cause the house plan, they're not showing the grading. That's just showing a house.
So, are you gonna, like, I guess, excavate out into the hill?
We're gonna cut it into, so the upper floor will come out on grade.
On the back?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
So it's basically one story from the back grid.
Mm-hmm, and then it slopes down.
Right, so then for the front, from the front grid. Yeah, you can stick, come back, uh, so if I'm looking at the front of the house, I'm on the street, the hill goes up. You have a garage, like, it's gonna look like two stories from the front?
From the front, it looks like one and a half stories.
One and a half?
Mm-hmm.
And how wide is it in the front? How wide is the house?
It's a fifty-foot house.
And it's, are you, your fifty feet's gonna be exposed to the street or you're gonna turn?
The fifty feet's gonna be exposed to the street, yep.
What, was it thirty by fifty?
Thirty by fifty, yep.
So, is the garage and the front doors like on Hollywood Street?
Correct.
Okay, so, any questions about, uh?
We were talking about stormwater management.
Yeah, driveway.
Yeah.
I see, I see a notation here, something about a rain garden. What is that?
Rain garden's just a, a, basically like a pond with plantings in it. So the water comes in and it gets absorbed by the plantings.
Did, when that's done, I, I've got a curiosity. Is there a, a way, how do you figure for how much water's coming off the park?
The engineers do that. They, they figure it out, they calculate where the water's going, and that's what the storm, that the, uh, rain garden. Is sized to calculate all the water that's coming off the roof and the driveway, and any runoff will be contained in that garden.
Okay.
And I know he's expanded it a little bit too, so it's more than what we needed.
And basically, the, the final design that Joe has done is gonna have to be approved by the engineering department.
Yes, but you're, yeah, by the local engineer, yep.
The town engineer has to, has to approve it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Has he, has this been submitted to the town engineer?
Not yet. No, we, we, we need you guys to say that we can go forward and then, of course, it will go to them.
That, that'll be part of the building permit process.
Process, exactly. Joe Reena's been here a long time. He, he knows what the town wants.
So, and, so, I, I'm getting old. Um, what's the height of, what's the roof height from the street? What are we looking at? Eighteen feet?
From the street?
Yeah.
Oh, from the street, you remember the lot goes uphill, so the house is gonna be up the hill too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was, I was of the impression that it was grade level and you cut that.
No, no, that, it's a, it's an uphill lot. If you look at the grade, it goes up, so the house will be sitting in the.
Okay.
In the hill.
So, and, and the final design is not gonna dwarf, like, it's not gonna be some big mansion looking at.
It's, it, the, the, the street houses across the street look just like it. They're gonna be.
The same side of the street.
Right across the street, the streethouse is the same house.
Across the street is one thing, but you got a string of houses on that side of the street that are all a uniform height, basically uniform size.
Yeah, we shouldn't be higher than them, no.
Should blend.
Yep.
Okay.
Within a couple of feet, you know.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's not gonna stick out, like, I'm gonna say, oh my God, what did this guy do, you know?
No, and we can raise the, we can raise or lower the roof pitch.
Make it to accommodate.
Commodate the heights, exactly, yes.
Right.
So, in front of me and up on the screen, um, there is a roughly nine-page. Stormwater mitigation plan here. Um, I guess my only question really for the board is, do we. Have this reviewed, like, right now by engineering or?
I think, I think we, I mean, the, part of the building permit process. Is to have the stormwater prevention plan approved by our town engineer.
Right.
So they will not be issuing a building permit until such time as that is approved. We can make this variance subject to that.
Right.
But it's part of the process anyhow.
So, let me ask if there's anyone in the audience that has comments on this application. We definitely got, uh, some inputs in the past, so. Come on up.
Yeah, so we are very concerned about.
Can you just please state your name?
Yeah, Henry Obligado.
Thank you.
Um, we're very concerned about, uh, water runoff coming from a new house. We are way down on Hollywood Street and we're already getting lots of runoff coming down and they're gonna cut trees. Make it, um, um, more difficult, more ea- easier for water to come down. So we are really concerned about that and we're wondering, um. We have a, um, an environmental engineer. From the New York State Environmental, um, Conservation, Department of Conservation and. I wonder if we could have that person see the, um. The stormwater management plan.
So, uh, well, let's think about that as a board. I mean, they normally will review. Large, like, development projects for us or on request of towns. Um, as what we said, uh, as a few minutes ago, we have a plan here. And I think would, you know, I'm not an environmental engineer or a civil engineer to even necessarily be able to like. Evaluate the plan myself, uh, more of a layman, but, you know, as my, uh, associate was saying is that. If it came to be where this was allowed to go forward, um, the applicant would have to get. Approval from town, our town engineer, that this stormwater plan, uh, mitigates all the. You know, generated water on this site. So, we do have a, uh, an engineer, the town engineer. And that's really their job is to approve permits for this excavation, development and stormwater. And I will tell you, you know, it's, it's here, it's eight pages, it's not, it's a thorough plan, it's, it's a professional plan. It's not just something that somebody threw together for this meeting.
Did you have someone lined up to do this independent study or, or, or you were asking for that?
No, I, I have somebody in mind. Uh, my son is, um. Uh, worked for the New York State Environment, uh, Department of Conservation and he's a, uh. Um, geologist engineer, so I wonder if we can.
Yeah, uh, you know, that's something that we have not encountered before, what you're requesting, where it's kind of like a professional.
Our town, our town, our town engineer is pretty good at what he does.
If he wanted to do it independently.
Okay, cause we're really concerned about this particular situation. Uh, we are down below.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And, uh, it's a serious problem for us.
If you, if, I'm thinking that if the, uh.
I mean, one, one, one thought I have is, let's say, uh, you know, this plan is now in the public record. You could give this to your contact in the, uh, was it the D, the DEC, I guess, right? And I'm sure our engineer would welcome their commentaries and inputs, even engineer to engineer. You know, through email, um, right? So, I, I don't see how that would ever end up being a problem where, you know.
If you wanna, if you wanna get a copy of it, you know, basically, you can get, get it from the building department. And if, you know, it, it is a public record, you can bring it to them, the ten, uh, the, she can also give you the name and the phone number. Where they can contact our town engineer once he has the plan. And if he has any comments that he wants to, you know, give our town engineer as a result of his review, I'm sure that. That Dan will, uh, you know, take that into consideration.
So how do I get those?
What you're gonna do is you're gonna contact the building department.
Ms. Reen right here, so she's got an electronic file of this. I mean, it's a huge set of papers, so she can basically give it you something that you could email. To, you know, your contact and, uh, it's like a PDF file that they'll be able to open and see and, and review. Like I said, it's, it's right here in front of me, but you can't, you know, scan it. And she can also give you the engineer, our town engineer's email and so forth and, like I said, I don't, I don't see how anyone would think it's a problem. Where an engineer, uh, is asking questions of another engineer because it's something that he would probably. He would definitely be willing to, uh, to review. Um, so I think that's probably the best way to handle that situation.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you. So, what I think I would suggest, I guess, or consider is a close and reserve on this one or just for.
Well, if we're.
Anything else you wanna think about or?
How can we close and reserve if we've got additional information maybe coming in? We gotta do the engineer's report, we may.
Well, I, I.
No, we're going.
This fellow's engineer might wanna look at it, so, I mean.
Comments from.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking, you know.
Subject to.
Oh, no, I'm just coming up to.
Yeah.
Subject to.
So, we have two choices on the, the stormwater plan. Um, I mean, I think what we proposed with, uh. The last speaker is, it not, this was not a DEC referral, it's a. Engineer to engineer in formal review.
It's a courtesy referral, pure review. It's a courtesy referral.
Um, cause I'm loathe to get like a official formal DEC.
Oh, no, no, we don't need to get involved, that's a time delay. We don't need to go down that road.
Then the question is, you know, given that that would occur, given that in order for this project to ever proceed. You know, our engineer will have to give a permit after reviewing this, so I don't necessarily, like, we have a way to say. Uh, subject to the engineer approval versus us saying, right now, we wanna have him review it.
So why can't we adjourn it? Thirty days, you got another month coming up and he's got time, town's got time, we get our answer, we make a decision. Based after thirty days.
We could either adjourn it or close and reserve or vote.
I'd like to just say one thing.
Sure.
You have to remember, we're mitigating the property.
Yeah.
That's not being mitigated right now.
Yeah.
So all this water that's coming down this hill is flooding these people out. We're going to be containing this water.
But that's your proposal.
So they are gonna actually benefit from this, so.
Well, you know, I, I think.
Dot that i across the t, like the town engineer say, hey, this is the way to do it. They may have it, so, yes, what you're, what you're looking to do.
I just wanted to make sure that you put that out there that you guys understand.
The modern site plans and mitigation measures are vastly superior to nothing and vastly superior to what was done. You know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years ago. So, I'm kinda with you there, however. You know, you're the applicant, so you're not necessarily to be believed on that statement, so that's why the engineers have to, uh, say yes.
Well, the engineers are saying it. They're, they're, he wouldn't have submitted it if he didn't believe it.
The town engineer.
And he's stamping it too, so.
So.
This was Joe Reena?
Joe Reena, yeah, so.
Anyway, so, any thoughts on how to proceed?
I, I'm gonna go, uh, either way with the, uh, with the majority. I'm inclined, I am inclined to. Grant it with subject to, but if the, uh, if the remainder of the board basically feels that it's.
I mean, I, I don't think, you know, as it stands, we're gonna.
That they wanna.
We're not gonna get anything back from the engineer if we don't ask them to look at something, right? So.
And, and how long does it take for the engineer? Is he gonna drop everything to look at it? You give him thirty days, he's got plenty of time to review.
Again.
And there's plenty of time for communication.
Again, I think we're gonna, we're, we're both looking at it the same way, it's just the, the way of how we get there, but, uh, make a motion and we'll do it.
Motion to adjourn for thirty days, wait till next month, and this way we have all our answers and we'll have our decision.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think we'll have all our answers unless I refer this plan to the engineer for comments.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You'll have thirty days for him to render comments and then we can decide how we wanna proceed.
Right, everybody. I mean, the only, the only thing that I think is, uh.
I, I would like to say one other thing, just remember that the town engineer has many, many other things in front of this, so. He's very busy too, and to put this in front of him when he may or may not have to do this.
Yeah, that's what I'm kinda gonna get at is, let's say.
Well, wouldn't he have to approve it anyway?
He does. If he doesn't approve it, we don't do anything.
Have to look at, right.
Yeah, but why, as it, if it's an open application that's not approved, we're gonna say, town engineer, you must review this. And he's gonna have to spend that time and then this project may never come to pass if we don't approve the variance. So we'll have kinda wasted his time, whereas if a building permit is requested, that review has to take place by law. You know, he has no choice, but it's, it's in support of a, an actual project, and that's really where I'm at is like. I don't want anybody to like waste their time, uh, on something that may or may not happen and it's not necessarily, um. A good use of their time. That's my opinion.
Alright, well, I'm gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the variance as requested, uh, subject to. The approval of the stormwater prevention plan by the town engineer. And the subsequent issuance of a building permit based on the plan that we have. On file, and, uh, it has to be substantially in compliance with the plans that we have, uh, in the public document.
Of course. Um, before I second it, is there a way for us to put on that motion? The height of the building or just the conformance of the plan as we've seen it, which is, I guess we're okay with the plan because.
Mm-hmm, well, the plan, if you're okay with the plan, then that's the plan.
Okay, and then if we're looking at, like you said earlier, that the houses on either side, what their heights are, that the new house is not to exceed. That.
Right, we can, you wanna say that?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, in addition, Glenda, to what Bill said, in, and in addition, is that. The, uh, height of the house not to exceed the houses on either side. So, uh, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Aye.
Now, you have to say.
Aye, well, that's, aye.
I'll second the motion, so.
All in favor?
You have to say all in.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you. Have a great night, people.
Thank you.
Sorry about that motion, but you'll, you'll get it.
I, I second that emotion.
Okay. Okay, now we're on to the section known as public hearing. This is people who have, uh, not been here yet and, uh, as a hearing. But were here maybe a month ago to start the process. Raguso, twenty-three thirty, twenty-three sixty-six Granville Court. This is an application to construct an addition. Construct an addition, uh, that requires a variance for combined yard setback of twenty-eight point one feet, where forty feet is required. And an above-ground pool with a side yard variance of eight point three feet, where fifteen feet is required. For section three hundred twenty-one of the town zoning code. Alrighty, you wanna state your name for the record?
Good evening, David Tetra, architect representing the Ragusos.
Okay, so, you can either start just explaining, is this all existing?
Well, originally, we were starting with an addition on the left side of the house, which would have required a side yard variance. Because it is going to be, uh, nineteen point five feet to the property line, which combined is beneath. The minimum allowed. However, when the, when we got a new site plan. Found out that an in-ground pool was installed and the contractor.
It's above ground.
I'm sorry, above-ground pool was installed. It was installed too close to the property line and that. It was installed too close to the property line, and that side yard setback for the pool is eight point three feet. So, we're seeking a variance for the addition, but I guess we're also legalizing the distance to the property line for the pool, which is closer than the addition. So, I'm not sure how we go forward with this from here.
I think it's all, um, you know, on the variance request, the pool. I said, just the plan in front of me, I think it's the same as what's up there. Pool is eight, eight point three feet off the property line.
The pool has a, has a, has a life to it, right? You should like, what, thirty years to a pool? Give or take thirty, thirty-five maybe, if you're lucky.
Yeah.
Twenty-five? So, so, at, at the end of, at the end of the day, when that pool's ceased to be functional, why would we have to vary the, the property line?
Well, the pool's there right now.
It's, it's there, but it's there, it's there basically temporarily, it's not a permanent structure.
Well, it's an accessory structure, an above-ground pool is an accessory structure.
But the variance goes with the property, so you could put another pool there if you wanted. I mean, the idea is, you could correct that issue at the end of its useful life and go back to where it's supposed to be.
We're, we're dealing presently with an existing violation.
Right, and we can approve that.
Which we, which we are going to theoretically address during our deliberations. And, uh, at the end of the day, uh, we can say, for example, that any further construction of a pool in the, uh, on the premises can or must be in compliance with the, with the zoning ordinance.
Essentially, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Well.
The words in my mouth.
Well, I don't know, I mean, that one's a little complicated, but, you know, the pool is there, the deck is built around it. I mean, any shed, any pool, any fence.
They're all temporary.
They're all, any building's temporary, I guess, for that matter, but, I would only say like, are you planning on getting rid of that pool in the near future or keeping it? Like, if it's something you're not keeping, like, we don't necessarily have to address it, but.
Little breaks down.
I agree, yeah.
It's already fifteen.
It's okay, like, you're allowed to keep it, I'm not saying don't, but if you said, we're ripping this thing down in three months, like, I don't necessarily wanna worry about it. So we have the pool, um, that's the three, uh, let me just read the memo from our building inspector. Have a building memo dated September eighth. It's an application for a building permit for an addition that is requesting a variance for combined two-yard setback of twenty-eight point one, where forty feet is required, and an above-ground pool with a side yard setback of eight point three feet, where ten feet is required. I've inspected the property, no violations, have no objections to granting the relief. CO will be required. Yeah, anyone in the audience have any comments on this application? So, all the discussion on the pool.
Steve has, has to make one correction.
What's that?
It says fifteen and not ten.
It's ten feet.
You gotta go to the mic. Go to the videotape.
Okay, this, this is Steve Freyetta again. This is addressing the pool only, the, the pool, there was, it seems to be a, an error that was made.
Okay.
Where it's, it, the pool, where it was originally noted that the pool was eight point three feet, where it's fifteen feet for an accessory structure, where, that's not true, it was an error, it's actually ten feet.
Okay, it's eight point three where ten feet is required.
Where ten feet is required, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
It does, actually.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's only a foot, it's only one point seven feet of deficiency.
Thank you.
Okay, so regarding, uh, we did the site visit, I mean, the houses are fairly spread out, it's on a cul-de-sac. Um, it didn't look like we were gonna be getting too close to any neighbors. Um, anyone have any comments on this one?
Nope. So, I just worried about the pool, so.
Well, the pool's there and, uh.
Come on, Bob.
It's gonna be allowed in perpetuity. So let me make a motion to grant the variance for, uh, twenty-three sixty-six Granville Court to construct the addition that requires a combined side yard setback of twenty-eight point one, where forty is required, and a var, a side yard variance of eight point three feet, where ten feet is required for the pool, with the stipulation that this applies only to the plans that are submitted and not the rest of the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Bartolini? Twenty-one forty-five Hunterbrook Road.
The mailing's in.
Okay, so this is an application for an appeal of a stop-work order and notice of violation issued by the building department. I'll take the file.
Okay, and this goes with it, these are plans.
So.
Goes in that file, I think, yeah, it's from the site visits.
Yeah, okay.
All right, it goes together.
So Bartolini, anyone here as far as the applicant? Do you have an email, uh, from the applicant to, basically, I guess, the town supervisor, but, uh, or, no, to Mizreen here, but anyway, I basically said he wasn't going to come to the meeting. I won't necessarily read that, because without mailings, um, you know, without proof of mailings, without a sign, no, a signed affidavit, a picture of the sign, I mean, especially the mailings, we're really not legally able to open the hearing here at this point. And there might be people in the audience here, but if I don't open the hearing, we're not gonna take any kind of testimony or comments. So what I would suggest, uh, actually, at this point, is that we set an adjournment for, until the October meeting. Invite the applicant to comply with the, you know, notification requirements, uh, which include mailings to the neighbors through, and a certificate of mailing presented to this board. We are more than willing and able to, uh, you know, entertain his request for an interpretation, but we have to have the legal, uh, notification take place for that to happen. So I, I would adjourn it for one month, if for some reason he doesn't want to keep, to come next month, I'll just.
Can we send him a letter advising him that this is how, what's required of him to proceed? That's a matter of record, give him another month, and if he doesn't comply at that point, then we.
I mean, I would, I would deem it withdrawn if he doesn't come next month, we'll send him an email.
We'll send him, we'll send him, I'll send him a certified letter or whatever it is that takes it, this way he can't say he didn't get it. That's why, you know, this is what we need from you, you need to comply, if you want us to entertain your decision, then, you know, make a decision for you, come and see us.
Yep.
If you can.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot of, like, backstory, but for the zoning board, like, we were requested to do an interpretation, we granted a public hearing, you know, we said we would do it, uh, but, you know, these are the requirements, the notifications and the, that, that's it, if you're not gonna do that, we can't have the hearing, so we're not gonna just keep adjourning it forever. So we'll adjourn it until the Oc, I'll make a motion that we adjourn Bartolini until the October meeting. And, uh, you know, just, and that's it, any.
Can I ask one question on that?
Not open.
Uh, yeah, you can ask a question, sure.
We can adjourn it if it's not open.
Well, I'm not, oh, we can adjourn it if it's not open?
No.
All right, yeah, we won't.
We won't entertain it until next month unless he complies.
We did the site visit, there was no sign, so that's right off.
I mean, I'm not adjourn, I'm, we're, yeah, we're not adjourning it.
We're not opening it.
We're not opening it, we will, I'll order the public hearing, basically, as if this is what we do the first month, so, I, I get, I know what to do, but, so we did have a question, and I'm happy to answer it, as long as it's not like testimony about the project.
Well, you had both trailed off, you said if next month he doesn't come, then.
I would deem the, uh. My, if there's no com, no, well, if there's no communication whatsoever, I would deem it withdrawn, the application withdrawn. And we're not gonna like, I mean, I, I definitely would give the person one more chance, but not ten more chances, right, to.
We're gonna send him a letter notifying him as to what we need to us to proceed. If he chooses not to comply, then we say bye-bye.
What does that entail?
What do you mean?
Who can I talk to to understand what that entails?
What do you mean?
What aspect of that?
It just.
What don't you understand?
There would be nothing here at this board that's gonna be done on that.
He's operating without your oversight now.
Well, we, we didn't, we're not an oversight board, we're just here for a legal interpretation. Um, I believe, you know, based on what's been represented, there's a stop-work order, there's whatever all that civil action is. He's allowed to say, hey, I, I want an interpretation legally, he did that. So we're, we're not enforcing anything, we're just here to hear the interpretation. You know, he gets one more month to try to do that. If it gets, if it's, uh, basically deemed withdrawn, he's back where he was before he made the application, which is the notice of violations and all these things that were in place, are in place, basically. Hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will make a motion to set, uh, Bartolini down for a public hearing. Let me see if I need to read. Uh, public hearing to appeal the stop-work order, uh, make the interpretation that was requested. I'll make a motion to do that on the October twenty-third meeting, go ahead.
Also want to, uh, ensure that, uh, we have access to the property if we do a site visit.
Right, so I mean, I'll, I'll.
Well, that would be part of the letter, wouldn't it?
I'll set it down for a site visit on October eighteenth, I, yeah, I, I think that, uh, you know, without like express written permission to enter the site, we're not gonna do that on October eighteenth.
And that's why, and that's why I'm saying, he's gotta communicate to us that he's gonna allow us on the property.
Affirmatively.
Yeah, so what I will do is say, let me, uh, I guess I gotta do this all with a motion. I'll make a motion to send a letter to the applicant, uh, informing him that we're opening a hearing on October twenty-third, and we're requesting a site visit on October eighteenth, and, you know.
John, are we opening the hearing or just adjourning the application?
We're adjourning the application.
And then whether or not we open it depends on whether he's in compliance with our procedures.
Yeah.
We're not gonna open anything until he complies.
So let's just adjourn the application till the next meeting and be done with it, right? Yeah, yeah, all right, so let me make a motion to adjourn this application, Bartolini, to the October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Billy.
So we'll send a letter, you don't have a whole reservation.
You're welcome.
Your job.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was simple, that was simple. All right. Chang, oh, that's a renewal for an accessory, we'll handle that at the end of the meeting. Deneen Carey.
That's awesome.
We have two applications. One, let's do the, uh, application to allow a sign in the front of a building in a residential area for a daycare center. So.
It's the sign, oops, put that right there. This goes with, this is for the sign. Okay, cool, very good. Now, this goes back to, this is.
Sign for a daycare center in a residential, so if you wanna just state your name for the record and just, uh.
Max Deneen Carey.
Kathleen Deneen Carey.
Okay, so we have a nice picture right there.
There it is.
Picture says ten thousand words in this case, I think. Okay, so for anyone who's familiar with the site, it's on Crampon Road. It's a daycare center that's been there for many years, and what we're here to talk about right now, I guess, is adding a sign that looks just like that picture. Anybody have any comments on this?
No, we went out on a site visit, everything looks fine.
That sign is actually gonna look sharp on the, on the two oh two side, from what I saw. I mean, it looked, I like where it's at, but I think it's gonna pop out the street.
Yeah, it'll be nice.
There, there is in the back, uh.
Yeah, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read the memos, so. I have a memo from the building department, Steve Freyetta, September eighth. Building is an application to allow an eighteen-square-foot wall sign on the front side of the building where four square feet is allowed per section three hundred twenty-one of the zoning code. I have no objections to granting the relief. I also have a memo from Abaca, which is the Advisory Board on Architecture and Community Appearance, dated August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Abaca reviewed the above reverence, reference subject at their meeting held on Tuesday, August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. According to the Zoning Board of Appeals referral memo dated, uh, August fifth, twenty-twenty-five, the applicant will require a variance to allow thirty-eight point one square foot sign where four square feet is, uh, is permitted per the code. The proposal is for a thirty-eight point one square foot pin-letter sign to be mounted on the building front with the words Pied Piper, the Pied Piper Campus, with a leprechaun logo in the center as shown in the attached rendering, which we're looking at. The Abaca has no objections to this, to the variance request and sign application based on renderings submitted and attached. Okay.
Didn't, didn't they, didn't they have to do that on the, when they put, when you put it on the side of the building, didn't you have to get Abaca approval for that sign?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's the same sign, okay, got it.
Not a leprechaun, by the way. It's my mother's original drawing from nineteen seventy-eight, it's the Pied Piper.
Yeah, come on.
Leprechaun, I like, I like that.
Well, they said a lot in this memo to get to the point where they have no objections. Like a lot to say, we have no objections. Steve, you should teach them about memo writing.
That could be, I could see that.
You should teach Abaca about memo writing.
That could be an elf.
Get to the point where you have no objections.
That could be an elf, that'd be a good tattoo.
Be a leprechaun.
Yeah, all right, I get it, no, yeah, that's definitely not a leprechaun, geez. Okay.
Could be Whipple Stiltskin.
So I will make a motion to grant this application to allow a sign on the front of the building at, uh, twenty-ninety Crampon Road for the Pied Piper daycare. The size is thirty-eight point one square feet, where, uh, how many, four was allowed, four is permitted? Where four is permitted. No, no, uh, there's only a discrepancy between what Steve said is eighteen square feet and Abaca says thirty-eight point one square feet. That's a little bit confusing, but.
Only thing I could think of is maybe they're adding the two signs together, cause I think with commercial, it's like one linear foot, I think you have a certain amount of square footage for your signage.
Yes, yes, yes.
But, um, because we are residentially zoned, I think it's obviously far less.
So we'll call, I think we'll call it eighteen, it's probably a better move. So let me, uh, make a motion to grant the variance request for an eighteen-square-foot wall sign on the front of the building where four square feet is allowed, with the stipulation that it conforms to the renderings and plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's granted.
So you stayed there, we gotta do the.
Yeah, so we also have a renewal for the, um, the special permit.
Sorry, sorry, Tom.
Okay, so normally we, yeah, so we, obviously you're renewing a permit for a daycare center that's been around for a while, I'll get right to the memo, uh, from Steve Freyetta. Application for renewal for a special permit for daycare center. The fire inspector inspected the property on August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and found no violations. The building department has no objections for the renewal. I do have a fire inspector memo. Okay, I'll, I do have this, uh, well, it's an inspection notice, so it's basically referred to in Steve's, um.
Yeah, they, they have to come out yearly for our licensing.
Yeah, so there's no, uh.
The county and all that has to come out too as well.
We have like twenty-five different, yeah, yeah, there's a lot of, my summer's filled with licensors coming out and.
You live in the dream, I mean, this is.
I, I just love it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to grant the renewal of the special use permit for the Pied Piper daycare center at twenty-ninety Crampon Road for a. for the Pied Piper daycare center at twenty-ninety Crampon Road for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're good. Thank you.
Quick question. We, we love seeing you guys every three years, um, and paying the, the fees. What, who do we speak to about maybe possibly getting like, we've been, she's on her forty-seventh year and we've been at this site for twenty-five? Are you asking for a punch? So I, I'm, I'm not saying I don't wanna come back in three years, but I don't know who we speak to about maybe possibly getting, I don't know, any sort of extended variance or, um, we have no plans of going anywhere, so.
From anybody on the board on this, I could redo the resolution if you guys deal.
I don't know. It's, I'm not sure if we.
Does it, is it indicate?
I don't, I don't need an answer right now. I just, we're, we're fine with three, but.
The next renewal, if you.
Yeah, if you, if you come back in three years, we'll let you.
It's three in the code.
We'll be back in three years.
Yeah, no, what, what?
We'll give you three years to think about it, alright?
What it, what it is, is that basically, and, uh, Steve is giving me the, the, the yes, is that it's in the zoning ordinance that it's for three years. So it's not something that we can typically change. If you wanted to address a request to maybe try to get the thing extended, you'd probably have to talk to the town board.
Okay, alright, thank you. We just wanna kinda know the next step. Not that we don't love seeing you guys every three years.
I understand totally, and like, maybe next time you come, if you mention it like in the first night, like the meeting before, we could.
It's alright. We'll be back in three years then.
See you then.
Take care now. Goodbye.
Okay, uh.
Are you finished with that?
Uh, yes.
To Chang. To Chang. Chang is a, is a renewal. Why they kept sit around, it's, it's a renewal of a, of a.
Well, they're not here, is it?
Is, anybody here on Chang?
Let me just quickly pull. We had some renewals of accessories and I wanna make sure no one's here on those. Reyes or Chang?
Okay.
Good, we'll just deal with those at the end. Okay, so we have a application for a building permit uh, to construct a tier-two battery storage system that requires a use variance. Tier-two battery storage systems are non-permitted use, uh, per section three hundred dash eighty-one-point-five of the town zoning code. This is the, uh.
Sure.
Anything else that's, uh, sir? Hmm, okay. Somehow potentially, uh, relevant to our, our hearing here is the sirens outside anyway, uh, maybe telling us something, but why don't we, uh, start with the applicant and just state your name for the record and just an overview of what we're, what we're doing here?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder on behalf of the applicant. I'd like to introduce, uh, the folks that are with me this evening. We have Mr. Andy Welch. He's the Director of Development for, uh, Rick Energy. We have Tom Saunders. He's the Senior Project Manager of Development. And we have Alexa Marino. She's the Project Manager for Environmental Affairs and Permitting. This is a application for a use variance for a public utility battery energy storage facility at three-six-six-six Old Yorktown Road. Uh, the property's located in a split zone between, uh, R-one dash twenty and C-two. This is a project that, that we started back in, uh, late September twenty-twenty-four uh, by meeting with the planning board, filing an application with the planning board, uh, having site visits with the planning board. Uh, and ultimately during that timeframe, the town was in moratorium, uh, although it did have an existing battery energy storage uh, facility ordinance at that time. In fact, that ordinance has regulated, uh, similar facilities within the town, including the one on Gomer Court. Uh, back in May of twenty-twenty-five, the town board did change the code to make tier-two battery energy storage facilities no longer a specially permitted use, and therefore we're seeking, uh, a use variance under the applicable state law, uh, regarding public utilities. What I'd like to do is go through what we submitted. I'd like to start with the site plan, uh, walk you through a little bit about where the facility's located on the property. Uh, and then I'd like to detail some of the materials, which I think are voluminous, but I wanna go through them at least at a high level and let you know what we submitted, uh, and where some of the, uh, answers to maybe some of the questions you might be asking can be found.
Well, and, and definitely we need the background and so forth, but, you know, this is ultimately a use variance, not a review, you know, not an approval of a plan or anything like that, right? So if, you know, our board's, uh, purview is to say, I think, the use is permitted or not permitted, we're not gonna take over being the lead on something like this, right? It's really, so a lot of our hearings should have to do with the, uh, legal aspects of a use variance and a public, you know, public necessity use variance. But we definitely need the background, you know, like what is it, where is it, you know, what it look like, all that stuff.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
I just wanna make sure we don't get too much.
No, a hundred percent. So, so basically, if the use variance is granted, we would still be back in front of the planning board for site plan approval. Completely acknowledged and understood and agreed. Let me just jump out of line a little bit then on what I was originally going to say, just to maybe highlight why I think maybe the site plan is important. We believe that this is a public utility entitled to the public utility, uh, use variance standard. And the seminal case is, uh, from the highest court in New York State, the Court of Appeals, Con Ed v. Hoffman. And I'll read a quote just because I think it's instructive. It's in our papers. It's in my cover letter, all of the detailed case law about what we believe is the correct standard. But what the Court of Appeals said, "To be granted a use variance, a utility should be required to show that denial of the variance would cause unnecessary hardship, but not in the same sense required of other applicants." Instead, "The utility must show that modification is a public necessity in that it's required to render safe and adequate service, and that there are compelling reasons, economic or otherwise, which make it more feasible to modify the plant than to use alternative sources of power such as may be provided by other facilities. However, where the intrusion or burden on the community is minimal, the showing required by the utility shall be correspondingly reduced." So we think we have a good site and we think that, that based on the public necessity need, which I'll talk about in a moment, um, we're entitled to the use variance standard. So let me just take a high-level overview of, of the property because I think, I, I think that it, you know, would be quick. If we could scroll up to, uh, page LP one oh one. Yeah, uh, one, one, one back. And my eyesight's terrible, so. So the proposed facility is five megawatts, and that's consistent with the facility that's over on Gomer Court. It's not a large-scale facility. In fact, it's a very small-scale facility. Just to orient everyone, and I hope the. I don't know why this is not showing up on the screen. Well, there goes my plan of using the, uh, the laser pointer, which, uh, poor Tom just bought, uh, for this meeting. Sure, that'd be great. I mean, that would probably be helpful. So starting at the bottom left-hand corner, just to orient you, that's, uh, Old Yorktown Road on the bottom left on, right there. Yep, great, thank you. Uh, on the right-hand side is kind of state Parkway. Uh, the very top on the left-hand side is where the existing access drive is, and that's that shaded area. And it goes around to where the facility's located on the bottom right-hand side. And that's an existing access drive, but we do plan to improve it simply with, uh, pervious gravel, just to stabilize it. The compound itself on the approximately four-acre property is approximately eight thousand square feet. And we have, uh, six groups of what we call the Tesla Megapack-two equipment cabinets, uh, in three different sections. Surrounding the facility is a fence, as I mentioned, for security purposes. And then we have a substantial landscaping buffer around the facility. Under the prior code, uh, all landscaping had to be twenty feet away from the facility. We meet that requirement. Uh, we've proposed fifty-three shade and evergreen trees around the facility to screen it. Uh, the access drive is, is fully accessible for emergency services, and the facility's ultimately interconnected into the, uh, Con Edison grid. We meet all of the setbacks, uh, and we've, uh, in discussions with the planning board previously, relocated the facility out of any wetland buffer or floodplain. So that's the site plan. There are numerous details that I'm, I'm sure are more interesting to the planning board, but just wanted to give you an overview about where the facility's located.
So just, uh, I know, like, we have a picture right here. There's the sign, but there's a house. So the house is, I guess, like on the top of this picture?
The house in the bottom left. That's the house right there.
Okay.
And then the pool's behind it. Uh, just up a little bit, and that's the existing residence. And we have a, we have a lease agreement with the property owner to install this facility on the property.
And I had heard or read this like a mixed-zone property, or is it?
Correct. So actually, the bottom portion of the property is the residential zone and the top portion is the sea. And we show the line. The line is on the plan.
The top portion was what?
Uh, C-dash-two.
Okay.
So basically, the actual building is in a residential zone?
Well, the, um, no, no, actually, it's just the opposite.
Yeah.
So the, the existing residence is in the C-dash-two. And the back portion of the property is in the residential zone. The zone line actually splits the facility, but we meet all the setbacks in either zone. And because it's a use variance, there's, there's no issue with respect to the zone related to use.
Right.
So we've submitted, obviously, the application form and the fees. Uh, we did obtain a memo of denial from the building department, clarifying and confirming that we need a use variance. We submitted two letters from the Westchester County Planning Board dated February nineteenth and April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and they actually opposed the town's ban on tier-two, uh, battery energy storage facilities, and they called out the, the necessity for these types of facilities for the power grid. We submitted, uh, what we call the Energy Storage Roadmap Press Release from June of twenty-twenty-four. And just to take a step back, this transition of the New York State power grid to an electric-based grid, uh, to stabilize the grid, to incorporate renewable energy, this has been going on for ten years. There have been numerous PSC orders and regulations. There's been the New York State Legislature passing the Climate Act. And as recently as June twenty-twenty-four, the PSC came out with an order specifically identifying the need for battery energy storage facilities for New York State's grid. So from a legal standpoint or from a regulatory standpoint, there's, there's clearly a need, but why are we in this particular location? So what we submitted was the Storage Hosting Capacity Map by Con Edison. And what that shows is where the feeder lines are that could support this type of facility where it would be necessary to be able to tie this facility into the Con Ed grid. In order to do so, there are a set of regulations that we have to comply with, and, and we have Con Edison actually perform what we call a CSER study, a Con Edison Coordinated Electric System Interconnect Review Study. We call it a CSER. Uh, and what Con Edison, Con Edison does is they look at the facility, they say yes or no. Uh, if yes, you can tie into the grid, and here's what needs to be done, and here's how much we have to invest into that project to be able to make those, those interconnections. And they performed that, and we submitted, uh, the redacted copy of that, which, which has the conclusion that this facility can be tied in and interconnected to the Con Ed grid. Doesn't stop there, though. We actually have to enter into an interconnection agreement with Con Edison, which we did do. And again, we submitted a copy of that document as well dated December second, twenty-twenty-four. During our process with the planning board, a number of questions came up, and we, we, uh, attempted to, uh, address a lot of those questions. And we had a lot of documents, both for the planning board that we've submitted to you, but also, uh, newly prepared, uh, regarding issues of fire energy safety and things of that nature. So just to hit a high-level overview of some of those documents, uh, we have a letter from, uh, Andy, who's here this evening, the Director of Development of Rick Energy, dated April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and he details the, the very careful design of the facility. And again, the facility did, as far as its location and design, it was modified throughout the planning board process, and we took a lot of the comments from the town, uh, planning board and, and other agencies into consideration, and a lot of that is detailed in Andy's letter. Uh, we submitted a letter from Sean Morris. He's with an independent company known as E S R G. That stands for Energy Safety Response Group, and his letter is dated April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. And that details that the facility meets the very highest safety and operational standards, and there's a lot of important information in that letter as well. We also submitted a letter dated October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, which was a response to the Bureau, uh, of Fire Safety Prevention comments that we had previously submitted, so that's in the file. We submitted what, um, what is the data sheet or the specification detail for the exact equipment we're using. We're using the state-of-the-art equipment. We're not using outdated equipment. We're proposing the Tesla Megapack, uh, two XL equipment. You have the data sheet. See what it looks like. It's self-contained cabinets. Uh, it is the state-of-the-art battery energy storage system. It's the system that was originally approved in New York City, uh, for use in the facilities down, uh, in that area.
On that topic, what's the shelf life for these units?
Twenty-five years?
Yeah, twenty-five years.
We submitted a geo, um, a geotechnical engineering report, just confirming that the soils can support the foundation, that'll support the cabinets. We submitted, and this may be the most important document, a Hazard Mitigation Analysis, again, by the third-party company, E S R G. And that goes through all of the relevant criteria on the state level. Um, it details the fact that at the time this was written, that the state was looking to update its code. The state has updated its code. It will be effective January first, it's my understanding, and we've committed, we will meet the new code. So we meet the current code, and we meet the new code that's coming in to effect January first, and in fact, in most instances, we exceed all of those codes. We also submitted a, a fire code compliance report from E S R G. We included an emergency response plan by E S R G. We will work with your local fire department to make sure they're properly trained, staffed, and otherwise with respect to this facility. We submitted a decommissioning plan from our engineers, showing that once the facility is no longer needed, uh, that'll be properly decommissioned. We submitted the full environmental assessment form. We submitted an ecological and habitat assessment, confirming no impacts on threatened or endangered species. Uh, we confirmed the wetlands. We delineated the wetlands. We confirmed them with the town wetland inspector. So other than the access drive, the gravel that we're putting on the existing access drive, the whole facility is outside of any wetland and even outside of any wetland buffer.
Is, is the proposal you're presenting, the number of units that are now, you're now proposing, is the site limited to those? Just could you, can you add more units as you go down the road, or is it limited to the units that you're gonna put in now?
So typically, it's fi, and, kind of, five megawatts per lot, which is, which is what we have here.
That's the question.
Correct.
It's, in other words, I can't make it like, oh, add another five megawatts, add another five megawatts.
And it's a great, it's a great question, cuz we, you, you've seen other projects maybe in the news, including coming out of Carmel, which were over a hundred megawatts. Completely different, completely different type of facility. This is a small five-megawatt facility on one lot. Uh, it's a, it's a distributed facility to be on the local power grid. That's what its intention is. Completely different than, uh, what you've seen in other, in other communities, but exactly the same as what you see here in Yorktown over on Gomer Court. And then finally, we also, um, prepared a sound exposure report, confirming that, uh, with the sound exposure would be from the facility, which is minimal. There are fans for ventilation in the facility, but we did detail that in a report. So I know it's a lot of information. The one person we don't have here tonight is E S R G, and quite frankly, the reason for that is, um, it is September eleventh. They, uh, the folks at E S R G are all, uh, either current or former first responders. Uh, they weren't available to come to the meeting tonight. Uh, but we did, we did put together a lot of information. Uh, we want you to have the time to review it. We received some comments from, from the planning board, which we think we've already addressed in the materials, but we'll readdress them regarding the proximity to the Taconic, just in sum and substance. We don't believe there would be any impact to the Taconic.
Let me read the, I will read the memos.
Okay, so maybe if I can address them after you read them.
So is it a good time for me to read a few memos? Um, but I've.
It's your show, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine. I'm done.
I mean, I, I think as far as this hearing, obviously, like you're saying, there's like a lot of information for us to process. I think some of the most important information is the public utility standard, you know, first of all, you know, don't, you have to prove that this is a public utility, or at least argue that it's a public utility. You have to argue that it meets the quote-unquote public utility use variance standard or the public necessity, I think it might be called. So we have to get to that at some point. Um, I think, you know, once we start maybe getting closer to understanding that, it's, gets more into then the nuts and bolts of the operation, you know, is more of a, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm just afraid to be evaluating the project before I understand the legal standards that are here.
May, may I hit on those standards then a little bit more than what I already did?
Yeah, definitely, but let me read the memos, and that's, you know, I think, uh, okay, so. I have a memo from the building department, Steve Freyetta, September eighth. This is an application for a building permit to construct a tier-two battery storage system, B E S S, that requires a use variance. Tier-two battery storage systems are nonpermitted use per section three hundred dash eighty-one point five G of the town zoning code. In review of the building department, in review, the building department does not recommend the granting of a use variance for this application as listed below. The main access way to the best goes through a flood zone. Should an event happen that requires the fire department to respond to this location, and if this should occur during a time of flooding, it could limit the fire department's ability to address the event. The best location is within proximity to the Teconic State Parkway. Again, should a fire event occur, this could hinder traffic or close the parkway completely. Since, since the town board has elected to remove tier-two battery storage system from the town code by granting this use variance, could start a precedent for other applicants seeking tier-two permits in the future. Planning board memo. So I have a memo from the planning board, September ninth, twenty twenty five. At its meeting of August eleventh, twenty twenty five, the planning board discussed the subject use variance request to allow a tier-two battery energy storage system at thirty-six sixty-six Old Crampon Road, Old Yorktown Road. The planning board believes that the battery energy, energy storing, storage systems are an essential part of our energy infrastructure and that they will be crucial in supplementing the energy grid as demand continues to grow. The applicant has argued that proving a hardship is not required for a variance as long as the use provides public necessity. With that said, the planning board reviews these systems with the utmost caution as they can be a hindrance or even dangerous to the public if not correctly installed, monitored, or decommissioned. While the board has no issue with the proposed battery itself, it strongly believes that the location of the battery creates a risk to the public that outweighs its public benefit. In the rare occurrence of a battery malfunction, smoke emissions from a fire event can potentially travel over the Teconic State Parkway, which could lead to closure of the entire parkway and Route one thirty-two. Such an event could have significant negative impact on the area for a significant length of time. For these reasons, the planning board does not support the subject variance. I have a memo, we refer this to the town board, the Yorktown Town Board. I have a memo from the town clerk. Um, this is a resolution adopted by the town board of the town of Yorktown at its regular meeting held on September ninth, twenty twenty five. Whereas, at its meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty five, the town board discussed the subject use variance request to allow a tier-two battery energy, energy storage system at thirty-six sixty-six Old Yorktown Road. The town board has been monitoring the evolution of this land use, beginning with its adoption of legislation requiring special permits to allow such use in, um, September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Over the years, the board has gained knowledge regarding such use and their, their technological evolution through various written and media sources, public input, expert testimony, and regional and national events involving these systems. The board recently determined that these systems, given the current available knowledge, are potential public health hazards and not desirable to allow as a land use, and therefore adopted legislation that removes this as an allowable land use from the town zoning code. Further, and specific to this proposal, the location and position of the system near the Teconic State Parkway, New York State Route one thirty-two and Route six, could exacerbate the potential health hazards, and in the case of an emergency event, could cause significant disruption to the traveling public as well. Therefore, the board does not support the subject variance. And I have one memo, it looks like, as a public comment. Um, I guess I'll just read that real quick. This is from Maureen Barry, dated August twenty-six, twenty twenty five. Hello, I am writing to voice my opposition to this variance request. My reasons for this are, this is a residential area. This location is by two streams, a trailway, the Teconic Parkway, and a children's daycare is on this site. If there is a fire, the danger element is high. I am not against battery installation, but this location is not safe or reasonable choice. Thank you. Uh, her address is thirty-five ninety Old Yorktown Road. So, you know, and I'm sure there's members of the public here, and I'm going to ask for input from them, but I don't think we've given you quite enough time to kind of get into the legal aspects. And I want to make sure you could do that before we start hearing.
I appreciate that. We'll, we'll respond in writing to all of the comments. I mean, just, just as a preliminary response, uh, as far as the access drive being in a flood zone, um, you know, the extremely remote possibility of a very low, uh, probability of a fire and then a flood at the same time is, is just astronomically statistically insignificant.
The impact of a flood on the system, on a fire.
Well, it wouldn't, because the, the facility's out of the flood zone, it's been raised, and it, it's, and it, it would not be impacted by a flood. It's on a, it's on a, uh, concrete foundation.
And how high is the foundation?
I'll have to, I'll have to pull that number up for you. But we could always, we could always raise it.
In that area, when we had, when Sandy came through, that area was.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you this, that, um, the site on Gomer Court was right next to the lake. And it was looked at the same type of issue, and it was put on concrete foundation, same, same way.
How about access to the structure?
I'm sorry?
Access to the structure from the street.
So that's the point, is that we have an access drive that will be gravel. If someone needed to access it, even if the water was up, they'd still be able to access it. But more importantly, the facility doesn't necessarily get access. It's an unmanned facility. Even in the time, well, of a very rare occurrence of a, of a fire event, the facility would just be basically monitored and allow, uh, to run its course.
Could that be taken offline remotely?
Well, it would be, it would be taken offline.
Take it offline remotely? You don't have to go to the site, you just have to throw the switch, right?
Correct. It's remotely monitored twenty-four seven.
Is there a backup for that? Like, say, say you can't do it remotely, you can, you could shut it down manually?
Yeah. You want to speak to it? Sure. I'll bring up our experts.
Just a curiosity.
Yeah, no, so it, it, it has, uh, basically, there's a, a automated breaker that's will be controlled by the utility. There's one that will be controlled by our remote operating staff. And then physically, there'll be a manual switch on, on premises that will open up the breaker. So yeah, any, any one of those opening disconnects the power.
So if there was a, a heat situation, overheating, it would automatically shut down? Like a, like a sprinkler system would type of thing? How would, how?
It has, the, the batteries have a sophisticated battery monitoring system. So that if a cell, in, down to an individual cell level is overheating, it can, it can stop the recharging or any activity on that, uh, to the whole pack or, you know, and is, is well to that specific cell.
And that redundancy, that's also being monitored?
So that, right, so that's, that's automated and monitored.
Okay.
So just a kind of a layman's question, it, it charges through the grid and dispenses to the grid, I guess, right?
Yeah, it's, it's ba- basically, it, it charges off-peak, uh, when there's excess power available and, and discharges during peak periods.
So we could have like a charging station on it, charge my car if I could do that?
I have a question, uh, with regard to comment, let it run its course. Because I understand that if the thing on the rare occurrence, it does, uh, break out flames, there's really nothing you can do to it, except let it burn out. Is that what you mean?
Uh, it, it's thermal runaway doesn't necessarily involve any flames to it. It's, it's a chemical reaction that happens in it. And yes, that when that, it will, you know, for the, the amount of time it takes to expend all of the available fuel, if you will, all the chemicals to finish the reaction, uh, will, will run its course.
What happens to those chemicals?
They stay within, they, 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 they'll melt the box, but they'll stay within the box, they don't run off. And the cabinet further is all.
Being discharged into the atmosphere? Is it, is it polyvinyl chlorides? Or what is the, what is the hazard material that's being put into the air?
It's, well, what's, what's, I, I don't have those exact information. We can certainly submit that. I think that may have been, um, in the hazard mitigation analysis. But the, uh, you know, we'll note that in, in some of the instances that have happened, they put in air monitoring equipment and found no detectable levels of any toxins in the air.
And the, and the important point was maybe more of a point regarding the Teconic. Um, those statements about impacts of the Teconic are just without basis. Uh, we've submitted a report, because we've submitted a report showing how everything is contained. And even if you compared it to other uses, there's nothing exotic about this in comparison to other uses. So, for example, you have a Lowe's right next to the Teconic on Route two oh two, which is, you know, if you think about what's inside of a Lowe's and the volume of what's inside of a Lowe's and the, and the location of the Lowe's, which was approved by the town, uh, right next to the Teconic and Route two oh two, um, quite frankly, this is, this is a much safer installation. The Gomer Court facility is on Gomer Court, but it's actually right on Route six, and that was approved by the town. So I know there was a comment there. So the fact that it's adjacent to the Teconic, there's no regulation that prohibits that. There's no regulation in a highly regulated industry that requires some type of setback, uh, from, uh, the Teconic or any other type of, uh, highway. So it's speculation to say that there would be some cloud of smoke. Uh, it's not supported by, uh, the experience, you know, read the reports. Uh, to say that somehow the Teconic would get shut down, again, it's in the report. Uh, that would not likely happen. Um, and then to say that somehow if the Teconic was shut down, it would cause some type of, you know, uh, significant impact. Uh, again, that's just not the situation. You know, you have Route two oh two, if someone, you know, the Teconic gets shut down all the time. I drive it twice a day, I come back and forth from Amawalk to Tarrytown. The Teconic gets shut down because of accidents or ice storms or snow storms all the time, and people find their way around it. In this case, if you were coming from south to north, you would get off at two oh two, go up to Route six and go around, uh, and, and vice versa. So I, I think a lot of those comments, while on their face and, and without looking at all the documents, you know, from, from just a statement, uh, might sound okay, but I don't think there's any evidence, certainly not substantial evidence in the record to support those statements. But we'll, we'll put that further, um, we'll put that further in writing, uh, and, and address those issues so that we have something in the record. As far as the, um, as far as the public utility status, uh, standard, we, we feel very strongly from a legal standpoint on that. Uh, my letter has, uh, all of the citations in the case law. One of them is, you know, just the, the general proposition that the generation and distribution of electricity has long been held to be a public utility. Um, and, and that's a citation to a Law Review article from nineteen sixty-two. Um, you know, there are facilities that generate, you know, electricity and facilities that distribute it. And the Con Edison grid, for, by large part, uh, distributes it. So it's not a matter of whether it generates electricity. In this case, we think it does when it puts it back into the grid. Um, but it's, it's part of the distribution grid. It's, it's the way to stabilize the grid. It's the way to make sure it's stable, particularly with the influx of renewable energy, uh, because these types of, uh, energy sources have to be stored, uh, for periods of time when they're not being generated. When there's not enough capacity, which happens sometimes, um, you could have a brownout. Or what the utilities do is they fire up extremely dirty, from an environmental standpoint, peaker plants. That's extremely, uh, bad for the environment. It's also expensive for the utility to do. What New York State has set up through the PSC orders and the Climate Act, uh, is a system of distributed energy resources that are essentially private investment, uh, into the grid. So the utility company doesn't have to, uh, make that investment into this facility. And then they buy the electricity, uh, at a, at a tariffed rate, at a rate that's been set. So again, it's all part of the utility grid, and it is electricity. As far as, you know, this type of electricity, there's been some very recent case law regarding solar, which is essentially the same type of use, private solar, uh, you know, privately-owned battery energy storage facilities, the analogy there, pursuant to, uh, New York State regulations and PSC orders. And we cited to the matter of Freepoint, uh, Solar LLC versus the Town of Athens Zoning Board of Appeals. That was a case where the local zoning board, uh, did not apply the public utility standard, uh, and, and they lost in court. And then the highest court actually ultimately remanded it back to the zoning board, and they applied the public utility standard, and they still denied the facility. And again, they were overruled as being incorrect. Uh, and we cited to all of the, uh, the basis, the bases for that opinion, uh, at both the, uh, lower court and the highest court levels. And I think it's very analogous here. Also, many other different types of renewable energy facilities. You know, wind, solar, uh, different types of other renewable energy, uh, have been entitled to that public utility variance standard. We know wireless telecommunications facilities are entitled to that public utility variance standard. Uh, again, pursuant to the highest court of New York State, uh, making that finding in the Cell One v. Rosenberg case. So this is all laid out, um, in my memo. Um, we, we cite to, um, the cases regarding wind energy generation, West Beekman Town Neighborhood Association. Um, that's in there as far as the citation. Uh, then what we also do in, in point two of my memo is, is why is this a public necessity? And I, I quoted you the, uh, the county letters, where the county planning board specifically called out that fact. But also, the Climate Leadership Community Protection Act, or the Climate Act, as we call it, from twenty nineteen, set various goals for renewable energy, including, um, battery energy storage. And then the series of PSC orders that lay out, uh, the process and the necessity for battery energy storage systems as part of the modern New York State energy grid. And this is all part of that.
So a question, you mentioned before about you cited solar energy. And how is, is that technology the same as battery storage technology? As far as, you know, we were talking about the solar aspect?
Sure.
Is that the same technology?
So it's, it's all part and parcel, and let me explain. Many solar facilities have battery energy storage systems as a component.
Okay.
So they, they create, they create the energy from, from the solar panels, store it in batteries, and distribute it into the grid, which distributes to the, uh, public. What this is, is this is just distributing the batteries into the local grid where it's needed. That's why I pointed out the Con Edison, uh, Hosting Capacity Map. It shows where the grid has capacity to take the energy in these locations. You know, we, we store energy all the time. Your car stores energy, you have a gas tank. Your backyard barbecue storage is energy. We take, we take, um, propane and we squeeze it down and, and we put it into a cylinder, a twenty-pound cylinder, right? So what historically didn't happen is we didn't, we didn't really store electricity. If you're an environmental law person, you go back, one of the original cases was Con Edison wanted to blow the top of a mountain off, and they wanted to put a water storage tank up there. And they wanted to store the energy by pumping the water up at night and letting it come down in the morning. And that's how they would store the energy, by pumping the water in peak and off-peak times. Now we have the technology with batteries to be able to store the electric energy. What does that do? That, that's to your point. With renewables, the wind doesn't always shine and the.
I mean, we do have storm.
The sun doesn't always shine.
We have solar, there's a solar array up on, up in, up in Jefferson Valley.
You have a lot of them.
And, and they are all over.
Behind Club Fit.
But, and they're allowed.
Yeah.
So, but so where's the, where's the, uh, objection? Where does it, where does, uh, you want to do this battery storage versus solar? So what's the inherent problem here?
So here's the difference, with, with solar, you, you clear-cut an area. If you've seen the one behind Club Fit, you know what it looks like, right? Here, we have less than eight thousand square feet and really just the six main boxes and a couple transformers. Um, there were, from older technologies and much larger facilities, a number of, uh, highly-publicized fires. They happened in California, and we had a couple here in New York State. We had one out on Long Island and, and, and two upstate. And each, each one of them, uh, have been looked at carefully. And those facilities differ greatly than this facility. Those facilities all had their causes, uh, which the Governor's Office created a task force, a bunch of experts. They studied those, those, those incidents. They came up with a, uh, with a plan to better regulate it. And they've incorporated it now into the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code. So they've learned their lesson. Plus, the technology, the Tesla Megapack technology is far and away more advanced. For numerous reasons, we'll have the expert, I'll, I'll get, get to you in one second, the expert come and explain. But each, each cell, as Andy talked about, is self-contained, within, within a, a bigger self-contained unit, within a bigger self-contained unit. So now, the idea is that to control any type of runaway among the cells. They're very individualized. That's one of the main things. The monitoring, uh, is, is much more advanced than previous. Um, the, uh, the, uh, all the different safety factors built into the Tesla Megapacks is not like in the past. This is the state-of-the-art system. So when you say where's the, why is the outrage? It's, it's because of, quite frankly, um, bad publicity for a number of incidents that are not apples-to-apples to what we're proposing here. I'm sorry.
I'm curious, the, um, problems that you've had in the past, is the historical?
Say, wait, not us, but the industry, I, I.
That's what I meant, the industry, not you personally. What were the problems? What were the nature of the problems? What caused it?
Sure. So I'd really like Sean to come speak to you on that, because he's the expert. But sometimes it was during installation, okay? Sometimes it was the one, the famous one out in California, I think they call it moss landing. The, the facility was gigantic. It had, it was plagued with problems over time. I don't want to point any fingers about, you know, how it was maintained and operated, but not the same type of facility that we're talking about here. But Facebook and the news gets a hold of it. Battery energy storage, lithium ion, they must all be bad, right? You made a comment as we heard the fire trucks go by, okay? There were fires, right? We don't ban houses.
That was for lithium batteries.
We don't ban Lowe's. We don't ban things. When you, when you look at the statistics in the ESRG report, despite the fact that the amount of battery energy storage that has been developed and implemented and installed has gone up exponentially, the amount of incidents have significantly gone down. And that's because the industry has matured, it's learned, the regulations have gotten better, and the technology, quite frankly, is much better. So all I would ask you to do is keep an open mind on that issue. Maybe it's a planning board issue, I'm not sure. Read the materials we submitted, listen to our expert next month when we come back, and, and, and understand that, that everything's not the same, and, and everything that's written on the internet is not always true.
I mean, every, every variance that we have, we're weighing, you know, the public, the public, the private, you know?
Absolutely.
We have those factors in any variance, right? So it is germane. It's, it's just also very germane to go prove the legal thing, which is normally not really something that we have to do. So I'm just...
No, I appreciate that. And that's why we went through great lengths for the memo. We put it in writing. Your counsel can look at it, you can look at it.
Right.
And that's why we submitted so many documents. That was the other chuckle, because we knew these questions would come up, right? But we will bring in the expert to talk to you, so you could ask the questions, you could hear from him. They are emergency response providers. They are experts in the field. They are, they are a third party. We do pay for them, we retain them.
So basically, are they just an expert for the project? Are they involved in some way?
So both. So they, they are experts, their company does this, so they get called to incidents. They sit on the governor's task force. They have a tremendous amount of experience, many of them from their time in the New York City FDNY. They also, we retain them for this project to do specific reports for this project at this location with this equipment, based on the comments we've received, next to the Taconic, all so forth and so on. So to answer your question, both.
Okay. You mentioned that the state laws are going to be changed effective January 1. Do you have, I've got a lot of material here. Did you include those changes to that law in the materials?
So we, we have a letter in the materials that lay out what those changes are, and which states that we, and at the time we wrote the letter, they were the proposed changes. They have now been enacted. We'll update that and say, these have been enacted, they will be in place, and we will meet or exceed each and every single one of them.
Okay.
And a lot of, and a lot of, a lot of the changes go to the items that you folks instinctually raised, right? The monitoring, the design, things like that. A lot of those changes were designed for those, those types of issues. So it's, it's in there, and we'll make sure we have someone speak to you about that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have members of the public, and I think I will ask for comments from the public at this point, and we'll see how that goes. But why don't we just state your name for the record, and then we'll...
Good evening, Jacob Stein. Attorney's presentation was very good, but he's representing his applicant, not representing the town of Yorktown, and therefore he's got a biased opinion. And yes, the town does have two battery storage facilities, but that's old law. We're looking at new law. What's happened in the past isn't relevant for now. What hasn't he mentioned? If the unthinkable happens and we have a problem, he hasn't mentioned air quality. He hasn't mentioned the contamination in the runoff from when the fire department responds, uses water or foam, and that winds up in the wetlands and the like. He hasn't mentioned the need, if God forbid something happens, the need for decontamination of FD's equipment, of PD's equipment, of people, of structures in the area, of the Taconic, and how long that would be closed before it could be decontaminated. If we had to close the Taconic in 132 and 6, traffic would be a nightmare. I remind the board that the prevailing winds are from the west, which would blow all of the air quality over the Taconic. You've got the memo from the town board and the planning board. We haven't heard from the applicant on risk insurance and what the underwriters say, and how they're going to ensure the project to protect the town and its citizens. Hurricane Sandy was mentioned. We forgot about Hurricane Floyd, which was worse than Sandy.
True.
We forgot about that. The applicant said that they can manually or automatically disconnect from the system. That doesn't drain the energy from the system. That leaves all of those batteries fully charged to be flooded out. They don't go to ground and discharge. So you've got all of that stored up energy that he spoke about that's not going anywhere but being retained. He spoke about his energy experts. And yes, and I know some of them. And he paid, or the applicant paid for their report. I didn't hear counsel say, zoning board, hire your own experts and we'll pick up the cost for it, and therefore getting an independent view of it. He hasn't said that either. The attorney represents his clients very, very well. But again, his opinion is biased, and I would hope the board turns down his request for a used variance. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? So any comments at this moment from the board?
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I mean, look, we'll, we'll respond to it all in writing. As far as the air quality, that's in the reports. Don't, don't believe me, believe our experts. There's no runoff contamination, because we don't put water on it anymore. That was one of the lessons the industry learned.
How do you put out that?
They let it, they let it dissipate and burn off.
There's no suppression, like dry cam or anything like that?
No, that was, that was not the right technology.
Just asking.
Yep, and they, and they learned from that. The industry learned from that.
When you said you were going to train our local fire department, what were you going to train?
So, so the training, the training is to let them know what's there and what to do. And what to do is not put water on it. That's a big thing. The next thing you do, though, is, is you make sure that the fire doesn't somehow spread, which is unlikely. But the point is, is they, they show up, they monitor it, and now we have a requirement to get someone on site within very specified period of times that take over the monitoring. So basically, they go there, they make sure that it doesn't spread. There's not a lot for it to spread here, as I mentioned earlier. We met your old code, so there's nothing within 20 feet. And, and, you know, in New York City, these are allowed within, within, you know, feet of, of other property lines. 10 feet, I believe, is the case in the setback. Here, we have, we have great distances from anything else. So basically, they monitor it, they don't put water on it, there's no runoff. The insurance, we have significant insurance requirements in our Con Edison interconnection agreement. I believe that's where it's, it's laid out. We can certainly talk about the flooding and raising the base if we have to, but I think we've already done a lot of that. So as far as what your next steps are, we defer to the board. We expect you're going to hold the public hearing open until next month. We'd be happy to bring back ESRG to answer additional questions. We expect you'll be leaning on your counsel to read our memo and, and give you advice. I, I agree with the speaker that, you know, that's, that's between you and your counsel, and, and we're here to, you know, lay out what our position is. It's not me saying this, this is all in our reports. As far as the law, it is in my, it is in my memo with my cover letter. So thank you for your time this evening.
Yeah, as far as our, our process, I think we have to get to a point where we believe the standard applies, you know? And that, I'm not saying I'm in disbelief of that, it's just, this is a new thing for us, and we have to research that issue.
I agree.
And then, you know, really, like, because just even what you see here is that, you know, it's in your memo right here, that the utility must show that this is a public necessity in that it is required to render safe and adequate service, and that there are compelling reasons, economic or otherwise, which make it more feasible, you know? So, you know, just because the state of New York wants to quote unquote "go green," I mean, I guess that's a reason, but a little, on the technical side, to me, it's why is this the reason?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think, I, I, let me, let me say this, let me say this. I mean, read the Free Point decisions, ask your counsel to read the Free Point decisions. It was the same, same questions. And it's, it's very compelling about the fact, it's not just New York State wants to do this. It's not like someone at New York State said, we'll just do... This has been 10 years of significant study of orders, of, you know, public comment periods, of analyses. You know, the, the June 2024 order specifically on battery energy storage is significant. The state has significant goals of 6 gigawatts by certain periods of time of battery energy storage throughout. And there's a, there's a reason for that, because the, the, the grid is being used much more. There's much more electricity usage, and the amount of electricity usage is growing at a considerable pace. Everything from electric cars, you'll have heat pumps in the future, it won't just be in the summertime. You saw, we had a few days this past July, I think it was, where the usage went through the roof. You have data centers now. You have a lot of pressure. You know, we lost Indian Point, obviously, right? So there's a lot of factors that go, this was, this was not a overnight happenstance thing. This was a 10-year process through an act of the state legislature and numerous PSC orders. And the PSC is the entity, the New York State agency, that's tasked with making sure there's a stable and reliable energy grid. And this is the conclusion they came with. But read those, read those orders, read those cases, you'll, you'll see. And then why this location? Again, it's a location that the grid needs it. It's a location that Con Edison signed off on it. They've performed the study, and we've entered into the agreement with them.
Question for you. I've listened to what you're saying, but in the event of, say there was the catastrophic situation happens, you know, the China Syndrome, you know, whatever, does the state monitor that? Do they send experts that would assist?
They have, so they have.
Local, like the local fire department? I'm sure, would there be mutual aid involved? I mean, it's like, what's the, what's it?
Again, it's not, the China Syndrome is a bad example, right? Because this is not something that's going to, this is something that's going to...
I use it facetiously as, you know, worst-case scenario.
Sure, no, but this, and I get it, and that's the, and that's the perception we want to make sure that we clarify, because what happens is, is if there is an event, and it's a very unlikely situation, the facility will be shut down, it'll be contained within the cell, and at worst-case scenario, it will, it will burn till it uses up its energy in place. There have been, when you asked me about the state coming in, they've come in when there have been a handful of other incidents, and they've done that air monitoring, and the conclusions are well documented, that, that it didn't spread. So yes, they do come in, they do monitor it, there are, there are procedures for that. And that was all, again, incorporated into these, this new state code to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, and kind of to the point that you guys are having, like, these memos all would, you know, make you think like, this is Armageddon when something happens.
And it's not.
And so in terms of the expert and whatnot, it's like, I'm not really up on these things, so to speak, right? So I understand the memos might be, you know, extremely cautious, let's say, as far as the way they're describing things, but the expert would definitely, I would like to hear, you know, an explanation of what specifically...
Hundred percent.
You know, and that's fine, so we'll delay it for next week, but it's like...
Presentation, yes.
All right, tell me what happens when this happens.
Yeah. And these are the guys, and these are the guys that have been there and know it.
Just explain it to me.
Absolutely. So we appreciate your time this evening, but we will look forward to meeting with you next month.
So unless there's any other comments, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this to our October meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. It's October 23rd at 6:30, again?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much.
No, October 25th.
No.
Don't worry, your clerk will keep me on board, and she'll make sure I, I have all the memos and know when I'm coming, so.
If you noticed, we go through just opening...
Yeah, we'll be in the middle part.
Then we do adjourn, it's like, pretty quick.
So hopefully, we'll be more towards the top next time.
You'll have the daycare center, a daycare center, and then probably...
Thank you very much again, we appreciate it.
All right.
Those two...
So we have a couple of accessories.
You have a rubber band for this. Can I get the rubber band? It's under Tony's arm. Move your arm, Tony.
Yeah.
I'm sure I steal my rubber band.
Okay.
Out here?
No, I've got to go on...
Yeah, 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 this room's got to empty first.
Yeah, I'll help you.
I got it, never mind, I did it myself.
I thought everyone wanted to get out of here.
You could have helped me there, big boy. Throw it out the next time.
I thought everyone wanted to get out of here. Okay. So all we have left are some renewals of accessory apartments. Do you want to get Reyes and read the building memo for me? This is Reyes, 2974 Sherman Court, application for a special use permit for renewal of accessory apartment.
What's this one? What is this Chang?
I have a building memo dated September 8th, application for renewal. Steve Freyetta has inspected the property, found no violations, no objections to granting the renewal. So I will make a motion to grant the renewal for an accessory apartment for a period of three years at 2974 Sherman Court. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's granted. We have Chang, renewal of an accessory apartment, 1480 Inspiration Road. I have a memo from Steve Freyetta, building inspector.